Did you go to the other courthouse?
No, I didn't.
He denies all charges on that, I know.
I wanted to use that excuse.
But you realized it before you got out of the car, right?
No, I was walking in the building and Barb got a hold of me and taxied me over here. All right, we are ready to go.
All right, if we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, good morning, everybody. We'd like to start off if there's any public comment today. With none, we'll move on to the board meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the the board meeting agenda.
All right.
Presented, no changes, Andrew?
No changes.
Motion by Schmidt.
Chair, I will second that.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. Andrew, can you walk us through it?
Yes, be happy to. So we have approval of the July 2nd board meeting minutes. Approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable. Approval of a 3.2 liquor license for Watkins Sportsman's Club for an event on September 1st. Approval of a letter to the Veterans Administration regarding the signing of death certificates. And approval of out-of-state travel and training for Deputy Muffley. That is the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any questions about that?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So, on the approval of state travel and training for Deputy Muffley. You know where I'm gonna go with this. I thought, I was told, I don't know, a few months ago, that we have a policy against out-of-state travel when I was in favor of one of our other employees going.
The, the, the policy requires that the board approve out-of-state travel. But it also requires that the department head bring that approval to the board for consideration.
Oh, well, that, I guess there was a big misunderstanding on my part then. So has that always been the policy, or?
Since I've been here, out-of-state travel's been brought forward by the department head to the county board.
Okay.
That's been consistent with our past practice as well.
Well, Brandy, I'm just saying that wasn't what I was told, so that's fine. I hope that, I mean, this is a good deal, and I hope they'll always consider, this person was on a grant, wouldn't have cost anything, so. That's why I was.
Did we not approve it?
It, it didn't come, it didn't get this far.
It didn't come to the county board.
I was gonna say, I don't recall it.
Okay, that was my question on that, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, anybody else?
On the letter to the Veterans Administration, Andrew, did you, AMC gave some direction on what they wanted there?
This is the letter that, that they sent out to all of us.
Okay, all right.
I, I made some minor changes to clean up some of the grammar and also make it come from Meeker County and not just generically.
That means none of us would have figured that out.
That means that he used AI.
Oh.
No, it.
I did not use AI.
Well, I knew they were sending out information, I wasn't sure what it was gonna look like, if this was. Okay.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Move made by Johnson.
I'll second that.
Second by Bredeisun. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sheriff Cruz.
Good morning.
Morning.
Brian Cruz, County Sheriff, so I have before you a proposal for our 911 software. If you remember, for the past couple of years, we've been budgeting for this. We're end of life, and then with the state of Minnesota moving towards next generation, that's been in the works for probably at least 10 years now. So this is the next step in this software. In addition to being outdated, also address some of the NG 911 initiatives, which include a lot more data coming into our 911 system, like videos or pictures of accents, things like, like that, so. Over the past couple of years, we've been looking at the new software, it's been a process to get that. We did get a couple quotes. We believed it would have been underneath the RFP level to begin with, that's where we got the quotes. Those quotes ended up being a lot higher. We went back to Motorola because we knew what Renville County paid for theirs and, and they came back with a quote underneath the RFP, which was the lowest quote here. So I'm presenting it to you today and asking for approval for the new best 911 software at $174,824.47.
All right, thank you, Brian. Any questions for?
So this takes us all the way to the next gen, or is this just a step in the process?
It's probably a step, but this gets us to where the state is right now with capturing other data, like videos and pictures and things like that.
I think we saw a presentation on that almost two years ago, wasn't it, Andrew?
The life expectancy on this software, like the last one's probably about that five-year mark, because we'll pay for the maintenance for five years. So I'd imagine in that time, then whatever's morphing in NG 911 would be addressed under the new software. But this gets us currently where we're at, where we're expected to be at with the state, so.
Mr. Chair, Brian, does this enable, like, text 911, or is that, where is that in this?
So.
This software probably enables us to do that, but is that something that happens a lot right now?
Yeah, so our software now currently handles that, we do that right now.
Okay.
We don't get a lot of 911 texts.
Yeah.
They're a handful a year, so. But we have the capability to take those down.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Brian, under our current ability to text, can they send a photo, or is that an enhancement that will come with this one?
That will come with this.
Okay.
And I did mention, so this, our 911 fund, the 911 fees we get back will cover the entire purchase, this will not, we won't use any labor dollars for this purchase.
Yep, and one more, Brian. Does, with the scammers, I guess is the word, I mean, does this software help us out as far as IT and be able to protect our network as far as it? Because I know emergency services has been having a lot of trouble, or I shouldn't say a lot, but more impacted lately and more attention to the scammers or fraud and stuff. So does this help us out in that direction too?
Yeah, I don't, in the big picture, I don't know how this software, other than they do more to safeguard. But really, that piece of it is our IT and then working with ECN, so they've been doing security audits and coming out to 911 dispatch centers and, and looking through stuff and saying, you should address this, or you should address that, so. The security piece of it is more on the IT side than the software.
Okay.
However, the software does address some of those vulnerabilities and, and they give it to us without having to put patches into it, so. And, but that, again, changes in a year, something they didn't develop, now will come out, but that's where we have to rely on IT.
Sure, sure, all right.
One final question, Mr. Chair. Then I won't ask anymore. Once we make the purchase, how long before it's installed and up and running?
Uh, they're telling us about six months.
Six.
Anything else? Ladies to the right, are you good?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the purchase 911 call handling software for Motorola for $174,824.47 and authorize the county sheriff to execute the purchase agreement upon receipt.
All right, motion made by Schmidt, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Bredeisun. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Brian.
I got, as long as I got you here, Brian, armor radios are, where is the county on armor radios, or you're smiling, so I don't. Is this a long, is this a wrong time to ask that question?
No, it's fine. We, we are doing good with our armor radios, because when I became sheriff, I implemented, we're replacing them, I think it's four on the road, four in the jail every year.
Okay.
So we're stepping through those, so we're okay. The problem is, now the FBI said that our encryption is not up to par, we need to change encryptions. They haven't given us a, a date to do that. When they do that, that'll be an issue because the current radio system can't operate with the new encryption, so we will have to buy all new radios at one time. And that's where there's been pushes at the state level to get funding out for that. It's failed every year that that's happened, but.
Yep, yep.
We're currently sitting good until that date comes, and then we're gonna have to figure out how we replace all of our radios.
And the reason I'm asking this question, so like, your fires and rescues, and there's a lot of radios in the county, out, out in the county. Should we be waiting a little bit? I mean, or should there not be a rush to upgrade, because most of us are on 800 megahertz yet?
Well, so the problem with upgrading with a new, and I don't know if that fire and rescue will actually get into that encryption problem.
Okay.
But the problem with upgrading to the new encryption is, then you're gonna have, you're gonna have four new radios that have a system that the rest of them can't recognize and vice versa. So you're kind of on an island, and you're back to pre-armored days of, we can't communicate with each other.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I don't, we're not in a rush to do that.
Okay.
Because we don't want to, we want to be in the same radio system, so. We're really hopeful, and the Sheriff's Association as a whole is really hopeful that the state steps up, because this is gonna get expensive. Just like the armor system when it came into place, it was expensive and the state helped us out. And then they said, you're on your own to replace your radios, that's why we started doing that yearly upgrade. But this new encryption's gonna cause us problems, and it will be expensive when we get there.
I know, AMC, we were supporting $250 million for, just for armor radios in the state, and they haven't addressed that, I mean, that's failed a couple times, but it's, it's a large ticket.
I think when people fully realize the impact of this, it'll help, but I don't think the legislature understands at this point. It's not a priority them, for them, but it will become a priority once the FBI says this is the drop dead date.
Yep.
Have to get it done, so.
Okay, all right.
And there's no patch that can be put in so that the encryption can be done on?
I'm surprised, I didn't know that armor radios couldn't update the encryption even, I was under the impression, if you had an armor radio, you were, you could always.
It's a different encryption system, so the hardware, the current hardware, the current radio doesn't support that new encryption.
Okay.
Get the new radio that supports that, and you can't have both of them on the same radio.
Okay, sounds like a mess. Thank you, I'll pass that along to.
Thanks, Brian.
Shocking to hear St. Paul doesn't know about things.
Shocked.
All right, moving on, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director.
Morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. This morning, I got four items for the board to consider from the planning commission meeting last Tuesday. First one is a conditional use permit, 16414, for owners Tom and Trapper. It's for landscaping project on Lake Francis. What they're planning on doing is they're planning on constructing an erosion stabilization project along their shoreline in order to stop erosion at the site. Basically, it'll be adding riprap along the shoreline, creating a native vegetative buffer, erosion control, utilize silt fence and fiber logs. Soil's moved for this project to be approximately 40 cubic yards, materials brought inside will be another approximately 80 yards of rock and other materials, geotextile fabric, sediment logs, total materials for the project will be approximately 120 cubic yards.
All right, any other questions for Greg on this one? Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the application for conditional use permit number 16413 to move more than 10 cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone and 50 cubic yards of material in the Shoreland District of the Recreational Development, Lake Francis, with the conditions.
All right, motion made by Holbert, looking for a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Schmidt. Any further discussions?
I just wanted to ask about the impervious, you've got that stated at 21% after this is done?
Yes.
What's our requirement again?
25.
25.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on.
Next item I have is a conditional use permit, 16415, for owners Terry and Melissa Dean. This is for the construction of two 19.9 kilowatt wind turbines at the property located at 5589 510th Street, Cosmas, Minnesota. Property owners are requesting to be allowed to build two equal cycle technology UX S16 19.9 kilowatt wind turbines for the Dean farm business on his property. Wind turbines, these wind turbines have a rotor diameter of 50 feet and a total height of 104 feet. So these wind turbines are certified by National WEA 9.1 and tested by UL listing 1741.201010R 21501 Safety Designer Performance Standards. If you remember, the Mimic property about three miles to the west of here put an identical tower on their property, I believe in 2019, that's what it was.
Okay, any questions on this one?
You said Mimics are three miles to the west, because they've got, they've got several, don't they?
That's the Adams project, yeah, it's three and a half miles, that big, they've got 10 towers, they're about three and a half miles away from that South Cosmos.
But Mimic, Mimic, we're talking Brad Mimic, on, this is just one small, just, not the Adams.
Right.
It's not, not the Adams property.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the application for a conditional use permit number 16415 to approve two wind turbines, 19.9 kilowatt capacity and 104 feet in total height from property located in Section 36 Township 117, Range 32, and Cosmos Township, parcel number 040220000 with the conditions.
Okay, motion made by Johnson, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Bredeisun. Any further discussion? All those, oh, go ahead, Steve.
Just for clarification, with the moratorium, this was either applied for before, or?
No, this is a small system.
So the, underneath, it's underneath that threshold, okay, just for clarification.
Yep, good point. Any other further discussion on this one? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next.
Next item I have is approval for conditional use permit, 16418, owners Next Gen Dairy LLC, applicant Biogas Co., Project 6 LLC for an anaerobic digester, an existing dairy facility produce raw natural gas. So Biogas Company is proposing to change the current manure handling system by integrating renewable raw natural gas facility utilized the existing dairy manure effluent produced by Next Gen Dairy as feedstock to fuel an anaerobic digester, raw natural gas facility. This raw natural gas will be digested off and moved as natural gas and will be transported to a facility in Richmond, Minnesota.
All right, any other?
Are there any other projects like this in Meeker County or in our area?
One in Meeker County.
This, this.
There's two being built in Stearns County right now.
Stearns, okay.
One's almost done, and there's actually over about 20, so that have been built in Minnesota so far.
Have you had a chance to tour or anything like that? This sounds very, very unique, very new, haven't.
It'll be something that'll be coming up more and more.
It's, it's been.
It's been around.
Yeah, yeah.
They're basically just capturing what's already, and utilizing it, I mean, they're not creating any additional product or byproduct that's, that's capturing gases that are there.
Yeah, it's.
It's been talked about.
It's been, it's been around for a while, just not locally, I guess.
I would say, three years ago, there was a meeting in a basement of a courthouse from a company that was promoting this at the time on a larger scale, not, this is small, just individual use or whatever, but.
Almost all the major dairies in Meeker County have been approached by similar type companies to put a similar system on their properties.
Mr. Chair, more questions?
No, I was.
Questions, so has it been wrong, around long enough so they know the effects or, or not? I haven't heard much about this, so, does it work?
It, it, it.
Seems weird to me.
Yeah.
They've been doing it in other, I was in India, which I would put India is probably about 1940 compared to where we are today. And they have digestors.
Wow.
So it's, it's not, it's unique to us maybe, but it's not unique in other.
It's been around a while.
It's been around, yeah.
And they.
I find it interesting.
Right now requires it on every dairy feedlot in.
California does?
I don't know if that's a good testament to use.
It's been around.
We understand, though, the point is, it's been around, right?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a conditional use permit application, 16418, to allow an anaerobic digester for an existing dairy facility to produce raw natural gas at 39679 59.
592nd, it's supposed to be 592nd. Yes.
Avenue, Eden Valley, in Section 4 Township 121, Range 31 of Manana Township, with the conditions.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Bredeisun, second by Schmidt. Any further discussion?
I would just make the comment that I know Next Gen was to the township and to the city because they're, they're outside city limits, but they're fairly close, just, they were good partners in this and talking to the local area, local governments before they came to the county, so I knew about this for six months already, so.
Just out of.
They made phone calls.
Just out of curiosity, what is premium price for raw natural gas? And it's only gonna make curiosity, doesn't have any effect on this.
What was discussed at the meeting is this is a higher price than what they'll, they'll pay for raw natural gas, or this renewable natural gas will pay a higher price than regular natural gas for it. That's what the consultant had mentioned.
So that gas is not gas. Yeah, exactly. All right, any other questions on this one? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up.
Last item I have is for a interim use permit, 16416, for owners Louis and Jeanette Fallon. Applicants Tammy Fallon for a second dwelling for a blood relative. Location 67600 180th Street, Darwin, Minnesota. Property owners are requesting interim use permit for a second dwelling for their daughter on the property to assist in taking care of her parents. Attention is to build a living quarters and part of a shelves to live in to replace the previous trailer home that the grandparents had lived in. When the parents are no longer able to live on the property, the shelves will be converted to an office or shop. Applicants are asking for IUP to last for a period of 20 years.
Okay, any questions on this one for Greg?
This was gonna be a shelves too, wasn't it?
Yes.
I think we're seeing more of these and are gonna continue to see more of them, which I think is a good thing, so.
Mr. Chair, move to approve an interim use permit application to allow a temporary second dwelling for a blood relative for 20 years at the property 67600 180th Street, Darwin, parcel number 080285000 with conditions.
All right, motion made by Johnson, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Bredeisun. Any further discussion?
I just have a question, Mr. Chair, on the, on the 20 years, are we, is that flexible, is the duration negotiable, or how do we arrive at?
That's what they usually ask for, 15 to 20 years.
Okay.
The applicants do.
Do we have?
Look at the age of the suppose of the parents, how long they think they're gonna be there. But it really expires when the parents are no longer on the property.
Sure, sure, but we can go longer, we can go shorter, we have variability.
We haven't gone beyond 25 years.
Okay, I was just more curious than anything.
Hey, I'd hate to pinpoint that, I wouldn't wanna be the parents, anyway.
Be a little flexible, yeah.
Three and a half years, dad's not looking good. All right. All right, any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Greg. Phil up, Public Works.
Good morning, Phil Schloss, Public Works Director. Anyone need a break before we dive into the exciting road and bridge topic?
Looking forward to this.
You know what?
First one, I'm kinda excited about the first one, that's been a long time coming, we've talked about it.
Say the first two if you want.
Well, I'm partial to the first one, by the way.
So item number one is approval of the replacement of bridge number 47519 in Manana Township. So this is a bridge over 592nd Avenue that was built in 1979, it's got structural defects, it's a timber bridge that is in the process of failing, I guess is the best way to, excuse me, explain it. We went out for bids, got five bids, prices keep rising, our low bid was Redstone Construction at about $1.3 million. Majority of that cost will be on, I'd say, state gas tax funds, coming from our township bridge funding sources. Up to $20,000 will come from the township as a match.
Okay, any other questions on this one for Phil?
I do, Mr. Chair, I'll move to award SAP 047599049 to Redstone Construction of Moore, Minnesota for an estimated total of $1,340,259.
Okay.
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Schmidt, second by Johnson. Any further discussion on this one?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, this is a long bridge, this is a.
Nearly 200 feet.
This is a big span.
Very long.
The crow, the crow goes under it at an angle, so it's.
And there's kind of some flood plain below, near the channel there too, so it, it may be our longest bridge in the county, I didn't look into that.
It's a big.
It's gotta be as, as close to it, if it not.
The crow comes in and actually uses the road bank for, we've had, we, when I was on Manana Township, we had to rip wrap the road bank for quite a stretch prior to it getting to the bridge, so it's kind of a, it's an interesting location in the river for the bridge, so.
How long's a project like this gonna?
I got a contractor scheduled yesterday afternoon, they anticipate wrapping up in mid-December, planning to start late August.
Completion, yep, this year.
That's their plan, I mean, that's all subject to change with weather and other things, but right now, they're hoping to get it done this year.
There's a potter.
Load capacity of, of this new bridge be?
Load capacity?
Yeah, like semis, big loaded semis and heavy equipment.
Traffic, as far as the maximum load, I would have to look into what it's built for, they do, so we have consultants to do the design, because we don't have a structural engineer in-house. And they will do a load rating of the new structure that we submit to the state after construction's complete. I can get you that, I just don't have that.
I'm curious, I, I would assume that it would be capable in middle of farm country here with.
Oh, yeah, it definitely capable of any legal load, you know, once you, 80,000 pounds is an unpermitted legal load, once you get over that. I'm sure it's capable of more than that, how much?
All the farmers up here are laughing, right?
I'm just trying not to say anything.
So, Mr. Chair, I just, so, at what point, you know, when I read about rotting timbers and decay, at what point are they dangerous, it's kind of?
Well, this one, probably three years ago, is when we discovered the rotting timbers during our routine inspections, we inspect, bridge is between a four-year and six-month cycle, depending on their condition, the cycle is more dense as you get lower in the condition rating. So when we discovered the failing rotting timbers, we had to have a structural specialist come and review the timber and re-load rate it and give us a recommendation.
Okay.
So safety on this bridge specifically, you wanna stay to the one side, and it's fine.
Okay.
It's more of a railing issue, but it's creeping in.
Take a run for it.
That's why Beth did not go along on the road tour, she heard the real.
That's kinda true.
Julie, your question about weight limit, the, the existing bridge was rated for semi-traffic.
Yes.
At, when it was in good condition.
This will be stronger than the bridge that's there now, and I think even when it was derated, it was like 30 tons, so 60,000 pounds. Something like that, so it would, this will be a nice bridge.
For legally rated loads.
So everything in rural areas is getting bigger, obviously, right? So I'm assuming that our bridges aren't lasting as long and have to be built differently because of the different equipment?
I don't know if I'd say that, you know, bridges were always designed to carry highway traffic. Our bridge failures are typically timbers rot.
Okay.
Steel, a lot of our old bridges may have steel piling that's exposed at the waterline in the channel that rusts and decays and goes away. Our modern bridges, I expect to last longer, because like this bridge will drive a steel shell, basically, I think these are 15-inch piles. Drive that into the ground for support, and then you fill it with concrete. So the shell will fail over time, but you still have that concrete supporting below the bridge.
Okay.
So our timber bridges are the ones that are failing now. There are a lot of them are from the same era.
Yeah.
There's one right next to Manana, I noticed, is in the report coming up here later. Yeah. Same type of structure, probably same age, let me guess.
This one's probably our longest bridge, that one's probably our. This one's probably our longest bridge, that one's probably our tallest bridge.
Good to know, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next.
The next topic is tied to that same project, is to consider the resolution and agreement, grant agreement with the state to cover a portion of the funding attached to this project. So I mentioned, some of these funds are coming from state gas tax. That would be the township bridge funds, if you look in the financial impact section of what was in the packet. So about nine hundred thousand dollars of this project comes from town bridge funds. A portion of that is allocated to the county each year, depending on the number of bridges we have, type of bridge, that kind of thing. And then a portion of that, I wanna say maybe half a million of it, and then a portion of it is allocated to the state as a whole when you have projects that costs exceed more than you have in your pot in your checking account. So that makes up the about nine hundred thousand dollars of township bridge money. The state was also able to help us find about six hundred thousand dollars in local bridge replacement funds. Those are state bridge bonds. That's the funding we typically use on bridge replacements on our state aid system. There was funding available, which is not typical, to help cover additional costs on this bridge, which helps lessen the burden on the township, certainly.
All right, any questions on this one?
Mister Chair, I'll move to approve a resolution, local bridge replacement program grant agreement.
All right, motion made by Schmidt.
I'll second that.
Second by Bredeis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, it's a resolution. Thanks, Paul. All right, Cory.
Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeis.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes. That said, resolution pass. Moving on.
All right, next, I will seek approval of our five-year highway construction plan. Put together a, kind of a brief, powerful presentation, just to kinda walk you through some things related to our state aid system. So I think you have all seen this before, if you were here and we talked about this about a year and a half ago, but we rate our pavements every two years, the state helps us with it, and we track the condition of the pavement based on ride quality, surface rating, and then the combination of the two, we call pavement quality index. And we assign a numerical value to that based on the surveys we do every other year. Like I said, the state helps us out with this. They have special vans that run around the state. I think all counties, or nearly all counties, utilize this service from the state. They use fancy stuff on their van to tell us what the roads look like. Here's some historical data. So we've been doing this, I think the first data point is two thousand eight, so it's hard to beat at this point to see how our pavements have trended. So this is our average ride quality around the county. You can see it's trending upward over time, you know, generally flat, I think, is what we're looking for. You're never gonna be perfect, everything can't be, but upward or flat is what we like to see. And I think one thing you can maybe point out is, since I've been here, so the last six years, we've put more funding into maintaining, preserving, and improving our pavements, less road widening, realignments, things of that nature, and that's where we can get more miles for our dollars that way. And part of the reason I was able to do that is because a lot of our roads already have shoulders. A lot of that work has been done, so we can focus more on keeping our pavements up to, up to snuff. Surface rating, so the ride, to explain that a little better, if we go back one, that's how the road feels. Surface rating is how the road looks. Cracks, potholes, things of that nature. So same thing, over time relatively flat, that's okay. Pavement quality, combination of the two, upward trend the last couple of years, but generally slight upward trend over time, flattish, that's what we're looking for. There's all three of them on the same graph, if you wanted to see that. Any questions on pavement condition? Very exciting, I know. Construction costs, like we've talked a number of times, prices still go up. This is my latest target cost, generic, on a generic section of road. I can think back, it wasn't that long ago where that top one, a hundred inch and a half, two minutes overlay, I would call about a hundred thousand dollar a mile project. This is a per-mile cost. It's risen significantly, and you can see when I talked about pavement improvements versus shoulder widening and full reconstructions, that last number, one point three million dollars a mile, you can't cover as many miles as you can with, let's say, a reclaim in between a paving project. Both of them replace all of your pavement, but you won't widen the road or fix curves and things like that with the reclaim project. So we've been doing a lot more reclaim projects in recent history. The money that count, that we get to do our construction projects, so in twenty twenty-four, our state aid gas tax, I guess I like to call it about three and a quarter million dollars, that's been trickling upward. Is it enough? I don't know. But we do supplement that with other funding, federal road program money. When we go through the five-year plan, you'll see funds from there, and that, that's a competitive grant that we, that comes out annually. State bridge bonds, that's the local bridge replacement program that we actually used some money on a township bridge on the prior subject. Elrip money, that's safety money that comes from the federal government. Oh, I skipped one, local road improvement funds, cities, townships, and the county have all been successful with some of that mon, money in Eaker County in recent years. Currently, we don't spend any levy dollars or local option taxes on our state aid construction program. I don't expect you to see all this, but it just kinda shows, we'll walk through the five-year plan, these are the parts of the county we expect to be touching in the next five years with major construction projects. Twenty twenty-five. So, I don't know how far in detail you wanna go through these, but in general, twenty twenty-five, those are pretty well locked in stone. This is happening. Our biggest project next year will be a reclaim and paving of our Casat three up in the north, northwest part of the county. And the majority of that project is funded by those competitive federal road bridge funds, about two point six million dollars of the four million dollar project will be federal funds. Casat twelve in the south part of the county, similar project, we're gonna reclaim it. That'll be all state aid funds. A little bit about how the state aid funds work, it's like a checking account. Every year, the state, through the gas tax and other taxes that flow into that account now, puts money into our checking account, and we spend the money as we can by combining projects. We don't always try to spend exactly what goes in, because it depends what our needs are and grouping projects together to make sense for us financially. Casat thirty-four bridge, that was kind of a new one that jumped onto our radar late last year. We were successful getting more federal, federal bridge funds to replace the Casat thirty-four bridge north of town here. So we're kinda pushing that up in the schedule to twenty twenty-five. We've got a township project slated for Litchfield Township that held some of that state elrip funding for next year. Twenty twenty-six, you'll see a couple of bridges in there. Casat twenty up by Lake Coronas is on the docket, Casat fourteen north of Darwin, and then we've got some federal safety projects, and the last two are bridges. Once we get out beyond, next year, bridge projects are a little more loose. I put them in there as placeholders, but as you saw with the Manana Bridge, getting consultants on board to design the project and getting it to construction, it takes time, because there is limited availability out there for those structural consultants. Twenty twenty-seven, you'll see a few bridges in there again. Then maybe something else to focus on a little is I have Casat nineteen and twenty-seven in there. That's through the city of Kingston. We've been working with Kingston over the last maybe year, year and a half, for them to start looking at what they have under our state aid roads so that we can work together on reconstruction projects inside their city limits. A big part of municipal reconstructs is the city, probably the biggest part. It's our road, but most of what's there is actually the cities.
And that just goes through the town of Kingston, then?
Yep.
Cause there's that little bit of edge on the other south side.
Yep, the main east-west through Kingston is our Casat twenty-seven.
Yep.
And then north of twenty-seven, where that light is, that's our Casat nineteen.
Okay.
And that's all the state aids we have in Kingston, so the goal is to address those at the same time. They're about the same age and same condition. And then hopefully we'll be done in Kingston for a while. Other projects, some surfacing work on Casat forty-two here, and that's kind of in the north end by the fairgrounds, and then Casat sixteen, more federal safety money and another bridge that's kinda in there on twenty-six as a placeholder. Twenty twenty-eight, as we get out here, I'd say years on any project are a little more flexible. We're not as locked in. We've got pavement projects planned for Casat thirty-one, resurfacing on twenty-six inside and outside of the city of Cedar Mills. We have to have more conversations with Cedar Mills, cause same as Kingston, they're gonna have impacts if we're doing a reconstruction in town, and they'll have to be prepared for that. Casat twenty-four, some pavement rehab work. I don't know, if you ever look at this five-year plan, if you look all the way at the bottom, I do try and track known trunk highway projects, so at least we're aware of what's coming up. They have a bridge replacement scheduled on trunk highway four in twenty twenty-eight down near the south part of the county. Twenty-nine, not much in there. I have twenty-one and thirty-two state aids slated for pavement work in those years. Five years out, it's hard to really lock ourselves into anything too tight. So those, that's the plan, but I'd say that plan will likely change by the time we get to that year. Any questions on the five-year plan?
When I used to serve on the township board, we had what we called the tar fund, and we would put it on CDs and save money and work up until we could possibly tar a mile of road in our township. What is the cost of tarring a mile of road over gravel?
A gravel road?
Yeah. Ballpark.
Yeah, they're pretty close.
One point three.
Kinda head.
One point three million.
Was that that one point five inch overlay?
No, it was the Ellsworth Township Project on six hundred and fortieth Street, if you looked at that one.
Okay.
I could pull it up here. Throw my slides.
Quarter million a mile. Four hundred, three hundred thousand a mile.
They got a couple of big grants, cause that goes down to that Greenleaf State Park.
Oh.
Six fortieth paving, one and three-quarter miles, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Three hundred thousand a mile.
About, yeah. Which is a good price, in my opinion.
Today.
Yeah. I, I've done.
Wait till, get better tomorrow.
Well, I, I've done projects similar in the past. Kinda depends how much pavement you're going on, closer to that four hundred, four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand dollars a mile.
What, what did they build that to? Was that, they didn't bring that to nine ton, did they?
The ten-ton road.
It is?
Yes.
Thank you. I was curious what that price tag was nowadays.
Looking for a motion, Mister Chair.
I'm ready.
I don't think there is any.
That was just information?
Yeah, there is.
There is.
Any other questions on this one for Phil?
Mister Chair, move to approve the Meker County five-year highway construction plan.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Paul, second by Steve. Any further discussion?
I notice our estimators aren't getting very close like they used to.
Things are moving quickly.
On many pre, I understand it.
Yeah.
They used to always be a lot closer, so.
Well, things were a little more static.
I understand.
If you go back five or six years, we're, we're chasing, and I think maybe a little more optimistic when we put our estimates together nowadays, that things are gonna flatten or things will come back a little.
Not happening yet, is it?
Not yet.
It's not a knock, I just, they used to really get close and.
We're, we're trying, but.
I, I get it.
It's a little knock, maybe.
No, it really, really isn't. This is what I said.
Well, in, in all fairness, like that Manana Bridge though, too, it's probably three years.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and like the worst three years that possible, be.
Right.
Be dragging things out, you know.
So when you're, when you're trying to plan for five years, it's virtually, how, how do you do that?
Yeah.
I always leave a little bit of wiggle room in there funding-wise, so we don't run out of money, but if you were.
You do a good job.
Look at our five-year plan, I'm probably in there every month tweaking the spreadsheet as things change.
It's rough right now. But I will say, I was on some other county roads, township roads and whatever, last weekend, and we do a pretty good job around here, I think, compared to what some of I drive on, so. Kudos.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, Township Maintenance.
No.
No.
Well, I don't need an approval on this one, but I did put together a little presentation in our annual report, just to kinda highlight.
Wrong order.
What happened in twenty twenty-three. So a few major projects that happened last year, Culver and paving on fourteen, Casat four work in town and north of town, Dassel, and a couple of township projects we'll touch on briefly. Casat fourteen, we drove that on the road tour, or a portion of it. Pretty long project for us. It was a reclaim from Darwin down to McLeod County, grind up the existing asphalt, lay it out, put back new pavement. About a three, three million dollar project. We did have seven hundred thousand dollars in local road improvement funds we were able to get for that to help us pay for it. A little bit unique to us, so since I've been here, there was discussion on fourteen of trying to add a trail between the lakes. I'd love to, but if you look at a picture like this, this is the completed project. There's just no room. Are you gonna take out the trees or the lake shore, or are you gonna take out buildings on the other side? So our solution was to offset the center line of the road. If you look in this picture, the right shoulder is much wider than the left shoulder. I've still gotten no feedback from anybody that lives out there, but hopefully it's better than what we had before.
I can say this, cause I travel that on a frequent basis, it's safer, because you got so many folks walking down the sides of the road for their morning walk, their afternoon walk, at least there's some room there now. So I think it's safer for the driver, safer for the pedestrian.
It gives them a little space if they're using the widened shoulder. The other thing we did is we did adjust the markings a little bit. Typically, we'll paint the twelve-foot lane, we painted eleven-foot lanes here, just to, it, it helps traffic feel a little less comfortable, which typically reduces traffic speeds as well. So those are the two strategies we used to do there.
And that is a reduced speed area.
Yep, it's a forty-five mile an hour zone.
Do we know if that's helped the speed at all? Cause that was a complaint, somebody's gonna get killed out here. Now I haven't heard anything, so I'm assuming it's better, cause usually only hear when it's negative.
They do have a, a flashing light as you're coming in, which indicates your speed, please slow down.
And we do collect data with those.
They're harder to read. I just, I'm going to the best.
Well, they turn off if you see a certain.
They just flash and take your picture when you're there.
But we did put those up right after the project. It would've been nice to see before and after data, but I don't have any. We just have after data.
Yeah.
Well, see, there is that intersection as you, coming from the north to the south, that could be considered almost, if you're not watching what you're doing, if somebody leaks out a little bit on the road, it, it could end up in a bad accident, but I don't think we've had any accidents there for a long time.
Not, not recently that I'm.
Well, it looks good.
Yep.
Next project that was major for us, the Culver, same stretch of road between Lake Stella and Lake Washington. You've all heard plenty about this project. Pretty expensive for a Culver project, in my opinion, but that is what they're going for nowadays. Like most of our projects, we got help with outside funding. We got state bridge bonding on this one to help, about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars worth.
Have you heard any flack from that at all since that whole discussion? I haven't heard anything.
Nothing since the construction happened.
I haven't either.
No news is typically good news.
That is true.
Are they able to take their boats back and forth now?
Slowly.
Slowly.
Let's remember too, it's a, it's a year where we have.
Water's a little high.
The water's high.
It's still tight, I think, what was it, it was twelve or fourteen feet wide, so I mean, if you're gonna go through it, you probably wanna go slow, and hopefully you have people on each side.
Right.
Keeping you from bouncing off the concrete.
So when we put that in, didn't we have one section that came that was cracked or broke or something?
There was one section rejected, yes. It was, if I remember it, it was damaged at the plant when they loaded it.
Oh.
And they brought it out. They knew they weren't gonna use it, they weren't trying to get by with anything. But it was on the load, so they brought it out and had to bring a replacement.
We waited how long for that, yet they came with the replacement pretty awfully fast, didn't they?
I assume they get priority if it's holding up, something like that.
Well, it looks good, I think. I think they had a good job out there.
Happy to have those done. Casat four, like I said, we had worked inside and outside of town. By town, I mean Dassel. This is the rural project north of city limits. It was a two-mile-long notch and shoulder widen with an overlay, so what we do there is we notched out on this one, two feet of gravel on each side. We had existing gravel shoulders. Two feet of gravel on each side. We had existing gravel shoulders. Put a block of pavement down and then put an overlay across the whole thing. It'll improve the ride, extend the life of the pavement. Cheaper project per mile, you know, this is a quarter million dollars per mile, but it is just an overlay. So I mean, we'll be back there crack filling probably in a few years. Patching will happen again in ten, but it gets us some extra light. In case you're wondering why the surface of these pavements looked a little discolored, we seal coated all these this year. And when we seal coat, we put down a fog seal, a final oil layer, and the top little bit of that oil after it's cured will come off on the tires. So over time, it'll all look more that lighter color, not the darker color, but that's just wheel tracking. It's not wet oil, it's dry oil. City of Dassel, this is, the blue line is what we did in town, north of highway twelve, south of the city limit, north city limits. Short project, one thing about municipal projects, if you look, it's a six-tenth of a mile-long project. It was almost three million dollars. And that's because of all the underground, the curb and gutter, the sidewalks. There's a lot more that goes into those projects. The county share was about six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of that because we take on responsibility of the Center twenty-four, basically the road core, getting it through town. The city is responsible for all the utility sidewalks and curb and gutter things outside that Center twenty-four. The city was successful getting a local road improvement grant, so that definitely helped them. A little over a million dollars of the project was funded through that. Picture what it looks like. It's a nice-looking road. Dunn's Lake Access Bridge. Dunn's Lake is, you look at the little yellow dot there, a little bit northeast of Litchfield here. This turned into a township project, so it was, it's the lake access to Dunn's Lake. There was question of if it was or was not a township road. DNR wrecked the bridge. We determined that it was a township road once upon a time, so we were able to access State Park Road Account Funds, which are only for township and state aid roads that, about lake accesses or state parks. So it took a while, but we did access outside funding to be able to replace that bridge. Very unique bridge. I had never installed a box cover and I filled it full of rocks, but that was the plan to maintain fish access and the hydraulics that the DNR wanted on this lake. So we put a box covered in and it has a concrete weir inside of it that you can't see because we then filled it about, I don't know, maybe up to a third of the way with rock.
Does that slow the water down enough to?
It, it's supposed to be kind of your elevation control, yeah.
Yeah, the weir would be, but I mean, the rocks, they're in there to.
I'd say the rocks do more than the weir because the rocks stick up above the weir. So for the weir to be your primary control, the water would have to drop below the level of the rocks. So it's, it's an interesting way to do it, but I understand it. During high flows, it'll have more capacity than during low flows when you get down to the rock, there's more obstruction preventing the lake from drying down too quickly. So this is the inlet. I'm standing by the lake. Here's the outlet. You can see, once it comes out the pipe, they, again, there's a lot of fall. They wanted to maintain fish access, so these rock checks were installed to help downstream. So fish could move up and down.
Still looks like the one that was coming through there pretty.
Six hundred and fortieth Avenue paving, so this is the gravel road paving that we talked about a little bit ago. A little less than a two-mile-long project, Ellsworth Township. They got same funding source, State Park Road Account Funds, because this touches the Greenleaf Lake. I don't have the name in my head right, but.
Greenleaf State Park.
That works. Picture of it, pretty basic, no frills, the gravel road that got paved.
Do they use that a lot out of the gravel pits? Is that why we built, you know, why they built it to ten ton?
The township wanted to pave their road. I, I don't know. We built it to ten ton based on their request, but as far as who uses what for the gravel pits, I, I know they use it. I don't know if it's more or less than other roads.
That's, that's gravel pit heaven up at the head of that road. Because you've got Meeker Sand and gravel, you've got several of the pits right around it.
This is just a summary of our construction program and how it was funded in twenty twenty-three. So about three point seven million dollars came out of our state aid account. Two million dollars of El Rip money, million dollars in State Park Road Account Funds. There's some city funds and a little bit of bridge bonding on our projects last year. Quite a mix, quite a mix. So part of what we do is maintenance as well. Construction is a big chunk of money, but so is maintenance. Maintenance dollars are, what we spend on maintenance impacts our levy, where construction doesn't that much. Maintenance, we typically don't have enough funds through state aid to cover our costs. We do get state aid funding, but it's not quite enough. So we spent about two and a half million dollars to maintain our state aids. If you look at this slide, the top section is our state aid maintenance, the bottom section is our township road maintenance. We maintain a lot more miles of township roads, but we do less per miles, where our cost per mile is less. Snow and ice, always a big one. That's our biggest expense on our state aids. Our biggest expense on our gravel roads is actually our gravel road blading, our township roads. Nine hundred thousand dollars of blading. One thing that's a little bit interesting is if you look at our maintenance on state aids, it was actually down about five percent cost-wise from twenty-two to twenty-three. I'd say a big part of that was snow and ice was down. We did do a little more pavement work. Little less chip sealing, which is always another big item, but on the whole, down a little bit. Township maintenance was up a little bit. And if you look at the percentages following those items. I think we're doing a much better job of trying to focus on the big three things we do, gravel road blading, snow and ice, and weed and brush control. That's why you saw that other category at the end drop substantially and the others increased a little bit. We're putting more focus and time into the things we agreed to do in our contract. Just to kind of show where that money comes from. So all I did here in the slide, the last slide was expense. This is where the revenue comes in to pay those expenses. That top item, so we get approximately two million dollars in state aid money for maintenance on our state aid system. So any terms for that number is levy dollars. It was about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for county state aid maintenance in twenty twenty-three. Then on the bottom is the township section. We collected about five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in maintenance fees from the township. That's our per-mile fee that we charge. And then the county, and then ninety-two thousand dollars of billable items, that's things like a road that's not part of the maintenance agreement, but we get asked to blade it, we'll bill for that. Replacing signs, we bill for that. Engineering work for the township, so we bill for that. The county chips in a substantial portion, twenty twenty-three is one point three million dollars to maintain the township system. And one thing for the next topic, keep in mind that last note of twenty twenty-three, once we have all of our costs put together through our annual report. We look to see what is the cost split between the township and the county on the maintenance of township roads. In twenty twenty-three, it was twenty-eight percent. We have no target per se that I've ever seen, but historically, it's been about a seventy-thirty split. And that will guide what we talk about next with our maintenance fee, trying to target that seventy-thirty split. Any questions on the annual report?
So I was finding this interest. A few years ago, well, before you were here, we took some money out of our, our fund, revenue fund to try to help get caught up a little bit on projects. Are we caught up on the major projects? I mean, is that any, we don't use levy money, which is great, but we also want to stay caught up and it looks like it's working all right, correct?
I think we're doing okay. It's hard to answer if we're caught up or not because it's always a moving target and it might depend who you talk to as far as if our roads are the way we want them to be. I'm satisfied with what we're doing. The things we're not doing, Kasaw three is a good example. A lot of people I've talked to who live in the area would like to see that widened with shoulders. We can't afford it. It's a long stretch of road. If we had the funding, I'd love to add shoulders out there. So those are the, the trade-offs, you know? Are we good? Yeah, but if we had more funding, we could do more enhancements like that, widening roads that could use it.
I think you're doing a good job, Phil. I appreciate it. I do. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Phil on?
Well, I'll, I'll bring up, I got an email and I got a phone call this last week. The one on Manana Township might be an offline discussion, but on signage for the tavern and stuff, apparently the county was going to take some signs down. That, yeah, that, and I, I, I said, I.
I didn't hear what you said, Steve. I'm sorry.
I, I got a phone call that the county was going to take signs down. That's a Manana Hilltop Tavern out on, but that would be the state, I think. They're on a number four, I thought, but.
I, I'm unaware of any signage for.
And I said I'd need to check with you to find out more. So we'll have an offline discussion. But the other one I got, a lot of this infrastructure work in the road right-of-way, you know, broadband and fiber optic and whatnot. And this is on the other end, this is down in Paul's district, but this email is County Road eighteen and Highway fifteen. Uh, over to County Kasaw nine, around that Bell Lake public area, just, must be doing a lot of work and making kind of a mess in the road ditches or, and on the road and stuff and.
I know they're installing fiber.
Police some of that or what do we, that's a bad word. But I mean.
I have to look and see if there's a permit on file for that one. So if it's the co-op, they typically try to install things just outside of a right-of-way.
This is, this says Nuvera.
And Nuvera, I think that might be the club, but I can't remember who's who, between the owners and the installers.
Oh, okay. I don't, I don't know, but.
Must be fairly recent though.
They're working under now.
It's odd since this is doing the install for Nuvera.
Yes, that sounds correct.
So, so it's the same thing in town. They, they came through my yard twice, then they came and dug it up again. And then they hire people to throw a little grass seed and I still don't have grass. And I complain and they go back to, they have a contract with the people. But I think some ideas of what shape a lawn should be in when they leave isn't, we're not in full agreement. And it's been a complaint, particularly last summer in Litchfield, everyone was complaining. So it seems as though they can come in and there's no.
But they must be, what they're referring to is after they come out of wherever they're working, that they're muddying up the road or?
I think a little bit of everything.
They, they do. That's what they do. They just do it and, I mean, they leave, my yard certainly isn't in the shape it was when they.
If the guys are down there, have them check it out and see if.
It's not a town, it's those small utility contractors who need a little policing. We don't babysit them. We're not out there while they're working. They do, if they're working in the right-of-way, they do have a permit with us or they should, lays out how they look to leave things when they're done.
Yep.
So if there's concerns about areas, I'll check out eighteen and nine because I know they're working down there.
Yeah.
But one thing to say too is cleanup does typically happen after the fact. They clean up as they go a lot of times. So a little bit of patience, but a little bit of nudging, probably both good strategies.
I wanted to mention along there.
I think the nudging is important because with all of this being laid, they, they are getting really, I mean, Litchfield was a nightmare last summer with it. So if they're doing the same out there, maybe, maybe just talk to them a little bit and say, hey, you know.
And we had a, two years ago too, we had Meeker cut a tile on one side of the road and three weeks later, I got the same phone call from the same landowner that. Well, the phone company up there, from Purham, I can't think of it right now. Anyway, they cut the phone line on, or they cut tile line on the other side of the road.
And I mean, they dig it up and then they come back and dig it up. That's really, I went out there and I was like, and of course, it's not their fault, so they're like, you gotta call my boss, you know, so it is what it is.
And you still don't have internet.
I, not all the time.
They cut your cable.
Yep. So Phil, I know that we've talked a lot about the, the detour that's occurring right now because of highway twelve.
Yes.
Can you just talk a little bit about that and any challenges that we may be facing?
Current challenges, and hopefully change at the end of this week, is if you're familiar with two hundred and sixtieth street north of town, that is a logical cut across to kind of circumvent the detour, which goes north on our thirty-four up to eleven zigzag. It stays on our state aids. It's a couple of miles longer than the cut across, but the problem is two hundred and sixtieth street is, it's not meant for trunk highway traffic. The pavement won't survive. There's some serious safety efficiencies on that road. So the township in, I'd say consultation with myself and in coordination with the state and their contractor has put up some road posts to through traffic barricades, if you've noticed or heard about those. That is why. It's a serious safety concern for high volumes of traffic to use two sixtieth. The good news is the detour is still on schedule to shift at the end of this week, which will push the detour. I think it's going to be from, it'll be open from here to trunk highway fifteen. On twelve, I'm talking. And then the detour will take people from trunk highway fifteen around Dassel. I think they were planned inside Dassel. If you want updated information, I can send out a link and that does maintain a construction website for the project that has more up-to-date information than. It's up-to-date for what I'm saying now, but as they, of course, changed, it'll update the website.
Thirty-four and twelve inters change there. Is that, I heard somebody talking the other day, roundabout, is it or isn't it? Or I said, I haven't.
I hate roundabouts.
The city's engineer, it was either last week or the week before, the next step is there's an ICE report, intersection control evaluation, that was incomplete in twenty seventeen. It's nearly complete, but not complete. The next step is to get probably the city's consultant on board with finishing up the report, which will require some cost. That's going to be hopefully shared by the city, the county and the state. I'm working on that. And I'll bring that to you guys to approve proceeding to get the report done. Once the ICE is done, I shouldn't say that, part of the ICE process completing, it will be public engagement. So there'll be meetings with city and county leadership as well as general public. And that's part of the process to develop the solution there. In my opinion, the logical solutions are a green tea, they call it. It's a light on the twelve, if you go out towards Buffalo, or a roundabout. A traditional traffic light will improve efficiency, but I think you'll sacrifice safety actually at the intersection. But that's part of the discussion that happened with the public engagement.
But Phil, didn't you say to us once before that whatever happens is probably going to happen after the construction of, or reconstruction of twelve is done?
Yes. It's not going to happen with twelve.
Right.
As of right now, there's no funding. We've had discussions with MINDOT for years and if we were willing to pay for the whole thing, I think we could do it, but I don't see that as a, a good way to go. So no, that's not part of this twelve project. That's going to be, I'd say, best-case scenario three years out. We're working with the city to target that, I think it was called DEED funds, it's state or federal economic development funding that we targeted last year unsuccessfully. That's still our goal. We need to finish this ICE to get, kind of nail down what the intersection will be and start some of the right-of-way acquisition processes and get a preliminary plan developed before we allow that funding again.
Anything else and Phil's updates?
I have another item, so if you think of something.
Okay, moving on.
Item. Consider setting, setting our township maintenance fee for twenty twenty-six at nine hundred and fifty dollars a mile. So in your packet, I put a brief history from twenty eighteen to now and then a little bit of forecasting and that kind of shows how I came up with the nine hundred and fifty dollars a mile. So as I said, this year, in twenty twenty-three, our cost split, when I talk about that seventy-thirty target, the township paid twenty-seven point seven percent of the cost in twenty twenty-three. What I did is projected a three percent increase in cost over time and it's not going to be that. That's me guessing the best I can because the actual cost will depend on the weather and a number of things. But if I project a three percent cost increase and then a fifty dollar per year increase, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five are already in the agreement. That is established. An additional fifty dollars up to nine hundred and fifty dollars a mile in twenty twenty-six should keep us pretty close to that seventy-thirty split. So that's where the nine hundred and fifty dollars per mile came from.
And if I remember, Phil, you went to every single township and made a presentation because I was with you and other ones in my area and.
In fact, I'd say that went off, it was during COVID too, so it did happen over the first two or three years, but yes, we went and I think the agreements were actually signed in twenty twenty-one. That was part of the agreement was, I think it's written in the agreement, two years in advance of the year, we would establish the fee because one of the biggest concerns I heard from townships was they need to be able to budget for that. So this gives them the time to set the fee about two years in advance.
All right. That bell must signal we are looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to set the per-mile township road maintenance fee at nine.
Mr. Chair, I move to set the per mile township road maintenance fee at nine hundred and fifty dollars for the year twenty twenty-six.
Motion made by Bretison. Looking for a second.
I will second Mr. Chair.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye. Motion carries.
I'll get ahold of you on the signage and see what I, I'll, I'll ask more questions.
Thanks, Phil.
Appreciate your work with the townships. I think the relationship has continually gotten better.
I think things have been positive.
No doubt about that. Mikel Johnson.
Good morning. Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator. Um, before you today, the first thing I have is approval of the Criterion Service Agreement for using Criterion. For Meeker County's applicant tracking software. So currently the county has Civic Plus, which is also the same. Company that does our website. Um, however, they notified us that they would no longer be offering the applicant tracking software. Piece after September thirtieth of this year. Uh, so they had, um, recommended Criterion. Which would be a, a, a good company that can migrate all of our current information over easily. Unfortunately, the, the agreement that they provided doesn't need the same, um, insurance amounts. That MCIT recommends. I did ask them if that's something that they can increase and they were not able to do that. Um, so specifically the agreement includes a limit of one million dollars for professional liability and omissions. Uh, MCIT recommends two million. With a, in a four million aggregate. The Criterion Agreement Language includes a limit of one million dollars for. Commercial general liability per occurrence and two million limit for general aggregate. Um, MCIT recommends one point five million per occurrence and three million for aggregate. So we're a little off on what MCIT recommends for those amounts. Um, the other piece of this as well is that, um, they are keeping our costs the same. As what we are currently paying for Civic HR. However, there is the implement, implementation cost for this year. Of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and that wasn't budgeted for this year because we were notified. That they weren't going to continue this service after the budget was finalized. So it'd be an additional cost for this year. But then going forward, it would be, uh, the same cost as what we're currently paying.
Mr. Chair. Because they're going to have so much data on applicants, um, their cybersecurity is in place. So that we don't have to worry about any type of hack getting information that flowed through us or.
They do also have cyber, um, security insurance as well. Believe it is one million dollars.
Mr. Chair. Randy, I'm going to ask our county attorney. So the fact that they're not, uh, meeting suggestions from MCIT. Are we okay with that, you think, or?
We're taking it upon the risk, but I think the risk is low and the need for this kind of. Program software is necessary. So I think it outweighs the risk.
So minimal.
But they did. I think, uh, Mikel and I did have a talk about, I was impressed with their cybersecurity information. So that was good.
Good, thank you.
And just so you know, the agreement that was included in the board packet is still being updated as well. There is a non-compete piece in this that we've asked to remove because Minnesota has made those not legal anymore. So they are going to do that. And then there's also a piece about, um, if there's any sort of issues where this contract would be seen. As far as legally, um, and right now I believe it says Connecticut and they've agreed to change that to Minnesota.
Okay. So you did review the contract?
Yes, I did. And I had, um, conversations with Mikel because that we didn't have coverage. She went back a couple of times to work with them. And Mikel was actually very good about getting that addressed on the front end, let me know. And then we tried to get. So at least if there is any sort of liability issues on our end, at least it's in Minnesota. So we don't have the outside traveling expense.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the service agreement with Criterion for applicant tracking software.
Motion made by Beth, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye. Motion carries. Next up.
Thank you. So then the next item I have is approving the updated Meeker County Personnel Policy. So this is kind of a continual process and especially when there's changes in legislation, then we have to make sure that the personnel. Policies also reflect those changes. So some of those changes would be that, um, we needed to update. Our language for earned sick and safe time because in legislation this year, there's been changes since its first initial rollout. So the changes would remove language stating that the first eighty hours of vacation and sick would be designated as protected time. And it would add that all accrued sick time is protected time. And because our, uh, policies allow that if someone uses all of their sick time, that they can then start using their vacation. Um, for sick, what legislation did this year is they said that if we have that and then people are able to use vacation as sick. Then that all of our banks then are considered protected under earned sick and safe time. So what this would do is it updates to make sure we're meeting legislation that, um, all of the sick time is considered protected. Under earned sick and safe time. And then once that time is used, if they go into vacation for their sick time, that that is also covered. Under earned sick and safe time. So it's updating that language to meet what legislation changed this year. It also adds language that employees may use sick time to make arrangements for or attend funeral services or memorial. Or address financial or legal matters that arise after the death of a family member. It also adds language that certain employees such as, um, deputies and CDL carriers such as our snowplow drivers. Are, are not able to use earned sick and safe time for absences related to weather closures. Uh, for, um, employees workplace or family member or care facility because of weather, public emergencies. Um, that was updated this year. Previously, it was that they weren't able to, but then, um, it was identified that having deputies. And snowplow drivers unable to work during that time, uh, causes public safety concerns. So they have updated that legislation. So that is to reflect that as well. Additionally, there is updates to the working out of classification, uh, policy. This was so that we are able to utilize anyone, whether it's a union person or a non-union person to cover. Positions that need to be if they're open, um, for short-term reasons. Um, previously it was that it was just non-union and we'd like to be able to have where union members can also utilize this. Obviously would be in conjunction with our collective bargaining agreement. Um, but it'd be, it would be a good change to be able to be more flexible and have, um, people be able to help out. When they would like to do that. Um, notice of resignation, we are updating the language in the personnel policies and then we are also addressing this with union contracts as well. Is really just a clarification of what timeframe it would be. Um, so right now, the, um. The personnel policies say that someone has to give us ten working days notice for resignation. Uh, for an employee and then twenty working days for a supervisor. We are updating that to calendar days to be more clear because different people's working schedules are very different. And so this is, there's some muddy language there. Uh, so we are changing it to fourteen calendar days. For an employee and thirty calendar days for a supervisor, just to make that language more clear. Uh, the catastrophic medical leave bank currently also says, uh, how long someone needs to be out before they can access that bank. And right now it just says fourteen days, but it doesn't say what, what those days are. So we're adding just the language calendar days so that it is more clear that it's tracked that way. And then the last thing is on the salary, on promotion and demotion. This update removes the set percentages of what someone would either receive or, or, um, be demoted. Because the legislation changed the language about, uh, current wage. So we can't ask, um, external candidates or internal candidates what their current wage is. When we're making decisions on what to set their salary. So we had to remove this language to be in compliance with legislation as well. So those are all the changes I have.
So the changes are just cleaning up language and.
And cleaning it up and then just making sure we're in compliance with what legislation did this last session.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the updated Meeker County Personnel Policies.
Motion made by Ober. Looking for a second. Second by Johnson. Any further questions for Mikel? All those in favor, please signal by, oh, is there a resolution? Oh, no, this one is not.
There you go.
I couldn't resist. All right. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye. Motion carries. All right. Thanks, Mikel.
I, I appreciate you sending out our. Are we, um, are things getting easier with what we've added? You know, we've wanted some reports on that and I'm guessing we're going to get those from you.
Yeah, I mean, we had a busy May. We hired a lot of people in May. So that was really positive. I, we still struggle in corrections officers. We're still short six full-time. So that is an area that we're still, but I, I really do truly believe that what you have implemented and what this board has supported has really made a difference. And I really appreciate that.
So are we going to be able to do a survey or find out more on that?
Wha- what exactly?
Results? Well, I mean retention. We, uh, you know, we added a hiring bonus for employee, you know, the things we've done. Can we, how can we put that, attribute that to results? Cause I would like to know.
So we, what we could do is we could look at who was brought on with hiring incentives and how long they've stayed so far. So we, and we have done that in the past, but we haven't recently, so we can.
I would just like to, to know that because when we did that, you know, obviously there was some people that didn't agree in the public. So I just think it would be.
Are, are you also looking for, um, like employee feedback?
Sure, absolutely.
I know we, we posed question, we did a survey a couple of years ago on that. Um, I think the timing of when we did that turned out to be less than ideal. Cause we were in the middle of negotiations and I think some of the responses we got were reflective of that fact. Um, so I think once we get through that, I think that's something that we should absolutely do again. Um, but in the meantime, we can certainly look at some statistics and, you know, where we have, you know, and I think also comparing, um. The vacancies that we had prior, or maybe, you know, a couple of periods of time. We can come up with something good for you.
And I, and I also think now the remodel, we're moved, you know, some things. But every board I'm on talks about, this can't always be about money. So we need to find out what we're lacking with staff that would improve. Or, or were they satisfied? You know what I'm asking? So I just think that would be, um, good for us to have. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Mikel. All right. Next up, Andrew.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so today is, um, we have before you, uh, approval of a resolution. Adopting the Meeker County Board Protocol and Public Participation Policies. Uh, this is an update to policies that were originally adopted by the county board in twenty eleven and has been the culmination of work. That this board has been doing since March. Uh, the, the policies themselves, um, were updated using a guide from the Association of Minnesota Counties. And evaluating, uh, policies from a. The draft policy was initially reviewed by the county board at the April work session and then again at the June work session. And also was reviewed by our county attorney with input from MCIT. Uh, the policy itself covers several areas, including, uh, the operation of our board meetings, the rules of conduct during the meetings. The rules and procedures for the public to participate, how the agenda is prepared and distributed. And then the election of county board officers, which we'll use on an annual basis. Uh, and then also the policy states that the intent of the board is to re-adopt it on an annual basis, the first session of the year. Uh, so that it is hopefully always fresh in all of our minds. Uh, in addition, uh, if adopted, we will post the policy. On the county's website and then we'll also keep a copy here in the boardroom as well. So any member of the public has the opportunity to view and review it. At any time. With that, I'm available for any questions.
All right. Questions for Andrew?
Mr. Chair. We had a very robust, uh, discussion at our work session in June about this new policy. But I feel it's important that I explain why I am opposed to it. Seventy-seven thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars taxpayer dollars were spent on electronic equipment. For this boardroom. This board currently has the choice, the electronic equipment and the legal right. Under Minnesota Statute thirteen D point O two to attend a meeting virtually and to vote. We never have to miss a meeting or a vote and that is our legal right. This expensive equipment, which we all voted unanimously to install, also records all commissioner meetings. And I highly recommend citizens use your seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of technology. To see and to hear what goes on with your local government. Commissioners, you do not have to attend every meeting. A commissioner can simply be absent with no reason. You forego voting and you simply do not represent your constituents and that is your choice. I personally used this expensive equipment to never miss a meeting or a vote. I have been out of town. Just last month, I woke up on a Tuesday morning and I was sick. It was my choice and my legal right under Minnesota Statute thirteen D point O two. To still attend those meetings and to vote. This policy, which we are about to vote on, paragraph four. Will strip this board of their legal rights under Minnesota state law. We should be working diligently to secure and to protect county commissioner rights. To represent the public at every means possible. We should not be creating policies that will strip away our legal rights. I, I have struggled with this since it was first brought before this board months ago. And I simply cannot vote to relinquish my legal right to vote. And I certainly would never agree to deny the rights of my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I had to get that off, off my mind.
All right.
Thank you.
You feel a little, look a little lighter now.
Thank you. I'm much relieved.
Yeah, all right.
With my last opportunity to try and.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, let's get a motion on the floor before we continue any discussion.
We'll definitely can do that.
With that, I move to approve a, a resolution adopting the Meeker County Board Protocol and Public Participation Policy.
All right. Motion made by Paul Johnson, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Steve Schmidt. Any further discussion on board protocol?
I for one think we are not, uh, doing anything to anybody's legal rights. You have the legal right to be here if you're not. It's just not the policy that we're adopting. I don't know what the county attorney, when you look through this and says you don't have a legal right. I think that's a misconstrued way to state what we're doing as a policy. That's my opinion. If you want to further, uh, update that in terms of what.
That's, that's correct. The policy that, and protocol that's outlined in this guide is legal. And so the limitation is not that of limiting anyone's ability to attend this board meeting, represent their citizens of Meeker County. It's just limiting when they're able to attend remotely and how. And I think the carve-outs here are exceptions. That are appropriate. Now I don't get into the weeds on what is the policy decision, but I can tell you that. I did review this with our outside. There is no bright line rule that says you cannot do this, and so I think because there's always that opportunity to appear and attend, you can do that. Also, we have to ensure that if there is a reason why you're appearing remotely, that we're following the notice requirement. And so I think that it's just, we need to clarify that there is the emergency exception, which would allow that the notice requirement isn't going to be, doesn't qualify, and so I think that's the exception we were under, is that there was a medical advice from a medical provider that said that you, Julie, should not be here, and so that allowed the exception for not properly giving the five-day notice prior to the hearing. And so that's still acceptable throughout this with the statute.
I just want to clarify, it's seventy-two hours. It's not five days, it's seventy-two.
Oh, is that just our practice?
Our practice is five days because we have the weekend in between, but seventy-two hours is required by statute for a notice.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Paul. I have to disagree with also that we're taking away the right to vote. We are simply saying if you are going to vote, this is where you're going to vote. It's going to be in the boardroom. So nobody's rights are taken away by this board protocol policy.
And I think it's spelled out in statute, and Brandy outlined that quite well, that emergency or medical is covered in statute. I mean, and I have a handout here, I'm going to give to, just pass one down, Paul. This is the current, I sit on Central Minnesota Emergency Services Board, which is a subcommittee of this board, and this is our attendance record, and actually, Andrew, I don't know if you can pull up online and put it on the screen, but this is public information. Central Minnesota Emergency Services Board, and this is just one sheet. There's four pages of this. The item circled up top, the ESB, that's the board I sit on, in Meeker County, I'm currently at a hundred percent. This is the first time I've been at a hundred percent in five and a half years because of their strict attendance policy. And if you follow the highlighted line from Meeker to the far side, this is a combined score, that ninety-five percent that we're currently at. If you look at the other three columns, RAC, O and O, and user meetings, those are all three attended by the sheriff's office, and we have a combined score at the end. If that combined score falls below seventy percent for any reason, we relinquish our vote until we come back above seventy percent. So you would be in a meeting, sitting at the table, and not be able to vote until, so if anybody, any one of us four attendees, and we've been in the eighties, when I came on, we were in the eighties, and you can see there's another county that's at seventy-six percent. So we're not, this board is, the Emergency Services Board is much more restrictive in their policy of attendance and how we vote, and they publicly publish for the world to see your attendance per month and per meeting of all four as a county, so this information is out there. None of this is anything that we're, that we as a board in Meeker County are doing, so, and as I stated in our work sessions, AMC, who is above, I mean, who I sit on that board, if I'm not there, I simply am absent, and I don't have a voice at the table. So what we're doing is not a practice that isn't, and proposing in this policy is not a practice that isn't either more stringent than other areas or are very similar to what other areas are practicing.
But this policy is just for this board. This is a policy that's just for this board, and it does take away our right to attend a meeting virtually and to vote. This board, this policy just created by Commissioners Johnson and Schmidt, who represented us as the policy committee, created this policy, which we're going to vote on, and it will deny us our right right now, according to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point O two, that states we can attend a meeting virtually and vote. You're putting restrictions on that Minnesota state law. So then, two people from this board, the county attorney and the chair, will have then the deciding factor. If one person's attendance is good enough compared to another's, they will have the right then to make that choice. I don't understand why there has to be a pitting of one commissioner against another to decide if, say, my emergency is worthy enough of allowing me to attend virtually when now, right now, we have the right in Minnesota state law to attend.
Mr. Chair, and county attorney Sheefelbein, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the state statute, which Commissioner Bretton is referring to, we can make it more restrictive. That's like, that's like a passing grade. You pass, if you have a D minus, you still pass.
And I think Commissioner Schmidt outlined in those situations that they are more restrictive than what's allowed in thirteen D O two.
So we're not violating anybody's rights by making it more restrictive.
You're not violating any law.
Right.
But why would you? What, what is your reason? What good does this policy do for us as a board and for our ability to represent the people? What good does an additional restriction make?
I personally think it's always nice to be in person, that you have more interaction, you have more intellectual feedback when you're in person, and that's my pretty much thought process on that.
And that's fine, Danny, that's your personal opinion. Some people don't like.
Mr. Chair.
Beth.
We've discussed this for a work session.
Yep.
You know, twice at least, and we have a responsibility as commissioners to be in this county when things happen. I'm not going to get into what we talked about before because we all know, but it isn't just a meeting. There's things, I get phone calls, you know, you need to be present in this county and do things if you're going to represent this county. You can, and I go on vacations, and I say I'm going to be gone, and I try to go around important things or whatever, so I think it's just, for me, it's important that we be here as often as we can. We can certainly sit in remotely unless, and the only we're saying is we're not going to vote, that's all. And there's a lot, so I'm in favor of this. We've discussed it on and on, so that's, I'm not going to get into the rest.
The vote is coming, and we all know how we're going to vote on it, but I would never relinquish my right to vote and deny my colleagues their right.
Then, Julie, you need to be here, that's all it's saying, unless you're ill or, and I don't.
And according to the state of Minnesota, we can attend.
Well, I'm going to, I'm not going to get into some of the state of Minnesota's policies.
I think everybody's had their piece at this one.
Exactly.
And I'm looking for a resolution in terms of that, so.
Commissioner Bretton?
Absolutely not.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheefelbein?
Yes. With that said, the resolution passes four to one, and moving on, administrative report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of things to report today. First off, we had a little bit of bad news with regard to the building here. The condensing unit that supplies air conditioning to the north side of the building on the second floor here has failed. We had an issue with it about a year ago, the time, we thought that replacing the compressor would give us a few more years. Turns out that is not the case. So we had originally that unit scheduled for replacement in our CIP. We pushed it out a little bit, and we're going to have to bring it back up now. So Joel's working with our vendor, Climate Makers, to come up with some solutions to be able to provide some cooling for that space through the rest of the summer, and, but it's one of the items that we're going to have to deal with sooner rather than later.
Andrew, if I may ask, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If I may ask, no lightning strike, no?
No lightning strike, no.
Heck.
No insurance.
Can we arrange that?
She's kidding, folks.
So we, like I said, we're working on coming up with a permanent solution. It will require a replacement of that unit. It is in our capital improvement plan already. We were going to be replacing the unit in our budget next year. You know, all four of the units that supply this building were installed in nineteen ninety-six, and what we have found is we have gotten every ounce of use out of them, so, which is a positive way of looking at it.
Is there a lead time?
Yes, there is a lead time. It's a significant lead time. The unit that Climate Makers will be installing on our behalf in the next few weeks, we ordered back in January.
Wow.
So it's about a six-month lead time. So that's why we need to come up with a temporary solution to provide cooling for that space. It may include moving the unit that's downstairs that we're replacing upstairs, but it's a smaller unit than what's up there, so that it's not going to be perfect at that point. Otherwise, my initial thought, and Joel agreed with me, was, well, let's take the new unit that we are going to install and just put it on the roof, but it's about five tons smaller than what's up there right now, so. So stay tuned, I'll keep you updated with that as we work through it. One of the items that we discussed at a previous meeting was our employee recognition picnic. We had talked about wanting to look at something, do something different. I polled our department heads, who spoke with a lot of their staff, and, you know, the general consensus was that doing a lunch would be the preferred option. So we will work on starting to schedule a date for that and come up with a plan for it, so.
Will it be all on the same day, or are you thinking maybe?
We're looking to do it all on the same day. I think the idea that we're looking at right now, and we still need to communicate with the city on this, is using Central Park because it's a kind of a good median location between this building and the courthouse, and then, you know, the folks in public works have to drive everywhere anyway, so, and try and do it there over, you know, a couple-hour period so people can stagger and come in and out, so.
So like, put the, still put the grill out?
Exactly, yeah. Do the burgers and hot dogs and? Do the same sort of fare that we would do, but just at a different time.
That makes sense to me.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
That was a good, Beth, that was a good suggestion.
I like that idea.
Thank you.
Certainly, the downside is we're not going to get families that way, but I think we're going to get more employees, which is ultimately the goal.
And I do go back to, people pick their kids up from daycare, they're tired, and they just want to go home, so.
Yeah.
I get it, so.
Good.
We are not going to have a work session next week, instead.
Oh, no.
Here I'd written that in here.
Instead, those of us who are working on the budget are going to use that time productively to.
Poor guys.
Work on the budget, so that's the plan. And then I'm going to be out at a conference starting tomorrow afternoon through Friday, but of course, I'm still, I'll blow the email or phone, I'm working, I'm just not in town. Otherwise, it's all my report. I'm available for any questions.
With that said, do we want a closed session, or do we want a little five-minute break?
I'd say let's go into closed session, and we can use the time that we need to go downstairs to.
We have to go downstairs to do it?
Yes.
Why?
Because there is not good audio separation.
Then are we going to come back up here?
We will come back.
Oh, my gosh, all these steps are stairs.
I think we need a motion to.
Heaven forbid.
We need a motion to close session.
We do need a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to Statutes thirteen, one, Labor Negotiation Strategy.
Motion by Johnson. Second by Bretton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're closed.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Me.
Bretton.
Yep, okay.
Do we take our items like?